We are started.
Are we taped, taping, recording?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. It's just after seven and we're going to get going. I'll call the role and then we'll get to public comment right after our managers' report.
That's all right. I'm actually a planner by trade, so it just makes me feel happy. So don't worry, you do hard work.
Great. Commissioner Edwards?
Present.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Staff?
Here.
Vice Chair Tobias?
President.
Commissioner Varela is excused and me, Commissioner Roberts. Let's see, any changes to our agenda tonight? Anybody? Commissioners' reports.
Some of you may have seen the news or even seen it yourself. I believe it was on Sunday, the old South Pacific restaurant, there was a structure fire there. And you know, like I drive past it all the time and I just assumed it was an abandoned building that called into disuse, which it was. But it sort of got me thinking as, you know, we're doing, I don't know who's going to be responsible for sort of the cleanup of that. Do we know like who the most recent owner of that property is? And if they could be held liable for the damages, both like physical and ecological or?
Call the insurance company. Yeah, I guess that's the way you get rid of an old building. Now, there's a couple of things, obviously. I think there's an arson investigation going. And then the property owner would be responsible for securing the site. So yeah, there's a few more steps I think that need to happen.
I'm sure the city is fully aware of all of it, so I just didn't know what the.
Full alarm fire. Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this time and just say how excited I am for the Fourth of July celebrations that the city is putting on. It's hard to believe it's already that time of year, but the parade and fireworks are always a lot of fun. And so I just thank everyone in the city who helps put all of that together, so.
All right, any other commissioner report? Managers' report?
I think we've already mentioned your next meeting again would be a joint work session with the council. There wouldn't be a planning commission meeting afterwards. Also, I'm going to propose that we cancel your July 23 planning commission meeting, unless there's a huge outswelling of no, we want to be here. I think we have one item that we can shift back to the 13.
Great. I'm fine with eliminating that. Our meeting in July, I don't know if we need an action on that.
Okay, thanks for.
Consensually agree. Okay. Looks good. Okay. Thanks, Brad. Let's go to public comments. And we have a guest with us here today. We'll get to anybody online in a little while, but if you would tell us your name and any affiliation and?
Well, my name is Chris Kowski. I live here in Tom Water and have since the 90s. And I am an environmental and urban planner, but don't practice at the moment. I do other fun things for my employment. But I am now a part of the group that's advocating for the Davis Meeker Gary Oak. And I want to be sure that you guys are considering preserving preservation in maybe adopting an ordinance within the land use element that you're going to be discussing tonight. And then because I am a planner, I must bring real public comments, so I'm going to read my public comments. So as you all know, the Growth Management Act was designed to encourage growth and increase density in areas where infrastructure could be provided efficiently and cost effectively by a local government. And in that way, preserve and protect critical areas to reduce the number of people in the wildlife urban interface and spare natural resources from disorganized random development. But in practice, all the DMAs have sloppy goals. It is undermined by the value our society places on money and the need to increase our tax base. Property rights and market forces make the goals hard to realize. When you found that your review working on this evening is the most critical component to end the effort to implement the comprehensive plan, I ask that you take the time to really consider Tom Water and what makes this committee unique. We are a small city and citizens like it that way. Please work to preserve our community identity by drafting and adopting a strong land use element that is backed by in force of old ordinances. Resist the easy option of sticking with borrowed plates or just rewriting what we already have. One, please preserve our city's essence and identity. We don't want to be a big city. We pick to live here because of what we are. Protect our beautiful landscape, critical environmental habitats, rural feel and historic and cultural resources, especially the Davis Meeker Gary Oak that the community is advocating really strongly for. Please push back against the power of the dollar by limiting the opportunity for variances, adopting unbalanced mitigation strategies and green lighting projects that are against the comp plan goals. Predict what our community will really look like in 2050. For example, work from home is the new normal. And all those state buildings, they're going to end up vacant. I don't want another brewery I saw. We should be ready. Zoning in place and clear guidance for our city planners so that we encourage redevelopment over new development, especially promoting quality affordable housing. I know this seems idealistic, I know, and difficult. But I ask you, have you ever been to Europe? The UK, Denmark, Sweden, Italy, the Czech Republic, countries I've visited, all seem to be able to manage growth in a healthy way. My grandpa grew up in a small village in the rural hills of Tuscany. We can still walk the hills where he was a shepherd today and sit where he, in the house where he lived. What will Tom Water be like when my kids' grandchildren come here? I'd like to think we won't be a giant sprawling mess resulting from the needs to raise tax revenue and the whims of developers. I appreciate each and every one of you for taking on this difficult task. Please preserve our history if you look for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. I especially appreciate that you came here tonight and obviously spent some time with your statements.
Well, I just think it's really important. You work in this room and you think everyone's going about their business on a beautiful sunny evening, but we do really care about our community. And just an issue like this tree seems to be galvanizing people to realize that they should be more involved, including me. So I want to thank you guys for the opportunity. And please keep in mind, people who show up make policy and I'm showing up.
Thank you.
If you want to share your notes or fit into an email perhaps?
I could email it to you because I scribbled my terrible chicken scratch on it.
I don't want to understand that again.
Yeah, well, you would. I'm a lefty.
That's true.
Apologies because I'm a bit uninformed, but can you tell me more about the Davis Meeker tree?
Well, that is the tree that's down here on Highway 99 next to the airport. And it is the only living thing on the Tom Water Historic Register. And in May, the mayor issued with her administrative authority an RFD and accepted a bid to remove this tree. She did so without stepping through the proper channels, which is to get a permit from the Tom Water Historic Commission to remove the oak, to ask the shippo, the state Historic Preservation Officer for a permit, and also to ask the community. And we just found out, someone found out and put it out on social media that the tree was going to be removed. And now there's a group of maybe 500 people who are really advocating that this tree not be removed. And we're trying to work through all of the channels that are available within the city government to help preserve it. And I would like you guys at the planning commission to consider that it's really rare to have a living thing on a historic register, especially this tree. This tree is special because it was probably planted by an indigenous people, likely in the Kalits tribe, as they were marking the Kalits Trail, which if you don't know is a trail of trade that went from Vancouver, Canada to Vancouver, Washington. And then when European settlers came, it became part of the northern marker on the Northern Oregon Trail. So the pioneers that came to Tom Waters probably sat and rested under that same tree. And the Kalits native people who are on our committee believe that is also a grave marker for elders. And so it holds a lot of value to the native indigenous peoples and to us because that is our history. And it was recognized by the city, put on the historic register. And in the 80s, they diverted the road a bit. If you drop eyes, you kind of drop to the left because someone else worked really hard to keep this tree alive. And we do not appreciate the mayor for going to her administrative authority and not governing in the way that we like, which is collaboratively. And so we're all just trying to make our opinions strongly heard by people who can help make decisions. We would, I would really appreciate it if you looked to that valuable resource and try to preserve it in our, because what history do we have left here? Our original town is under the freeway. Thank you for your attention. If there's anything, any questions, you can reach out. We have a, we're all kind of older, there's a Facebook page and there's a hashtag. And if you have time in your free time, which you don't because you're on the planning commission, you could come visit the tree. And right now we're spared because a pair of rare migratory testrels are nesting in the tree. And until their babies fledge, the tree is protected by federal law. And that gives us a little time to advocate. Thank you. And if you see the mayor, tell her. I would really more appreciate a collaborative decision-making process than a authoritative one, especially in my city. Hope that you recognize some of the other people who might also want to speak. And then when they're done, I will leave you to your business.
Looks like we have, we do have a couple of people online. And I will call, I hope I'm saying your name correctly, Ms. Rompa, if you would introduce yourself and if you have any other questions and you have maybe about three minutes or so, go ahead.
Hi, this is Christine Rompa with Puget Sound Energy. I am just watching to learn more about what you folks are planning to do with your land use section. So thank you. No comment.
Great. Thanks for taking the time to join the meeting.
Pass that. Don't get hung up on tonight.
Okay, for doing that. And we have another person, I can't quite make see the name. There we go. Ms. Sikora, if you would like to address the planning commission, if you state your name and any affiliation and you have about three minutes.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. My name is Sue Sikora. And I'm also with the Save the Oak Tree group. And I think Chris said everything so beautifully. I, you know, I don't want to duplicate what she's already said. But in attending, watching your last meeting of this committee and tonight to watching your work session, it's really great the work you all are doing and it's so diverse as well. So when I, when I looked at, you know, ways that this tree can be helped, the ordinances have been a big problem. That's kind of where the problem started with the tree is the lack of ordinances and guidance, guidelines for how to manage this tree. So that's what I wanted to just kind of leave you all with the question to ask yourselves if perhaps you could, could make a time for a discussion about it, brainstorming how your planning commission might be able to consider helping the city council or advising the city council or helping them with the ordinances, any possible ways that your committee might help with the oak tree. And the other thing was to ask, oh, well, you probably already know this, but it does seem that most of the city council members are willing to consider changes to the ordinances to preserve this tree. But it just seems that they're needing help. So I, you know, and I don't understand all the committees and how they work, but I'm hoping yours will be one that might be a resource for them in figuring it out. When I was looking up the definitions of the different committees and the Tom Water Planning Commission, it said that the Planning Commission Advisory Board to the Council on Land Use and Comprehensive Planning Issues and any other interesting items, which I thought that was funny, interesting items which the council feels may need planning commission review. And of course, I didn't know what comprehensive planning issues are, so I had to look up that too. And I found a definition, comprehensive planning issues can include topics such as health and safety and environmental concerns. And then under environmental concerns for comprehensive plans, it said addressing environmental concerns as protect natural resources. They can include information biological resources, natural resources, and conservation priorities. So I don't know, I don't know if that's what your committee does, but I thought, well, maybe this committee can help. And so that's just what I wanted to leave you with, I guess, a plea for help. And maybe you can work some magic with all the intelligence and skill sets that all your members have. So, so thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming here and addressing us tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of feeling, which we appreciate, I think, as a body. And you're correct, our, our commission is advisory to the council. So, you know, I, I don't want to present something that's not, you know, to keep it realistic about what, what we are about as a, as a unit under the City of Tom Waters' structure. So, but yes, we appreciate hearing from you both on this matter.
You know, once the tree is gone, you have to spend that 450 years' worth of life.
And I'd just like to make a statement. So I'm a director of center of the Bush family. So I am very familiar with the tree, very familiar with all of these efforts. I also managed the Bush butternut tree that's about two years ago. So I am very familiar and thank you for coming in today. I'm on this commission because I consider Tom Water my family heritage. So that's why I'm personally here.
It's my family's heritage too?
Yeah.
So thank you. Thank you. But I wish I was descended from a pioneer who first settled here, but alas, I was born in New York. But thank you very much for your time. And I know this, you guys do really good work and it's quite challenging. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Have a very good evening and I will send, I will send an email with my comments.
My information card.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. It looks like there's another person joined, a third person joined. It looks, oh, okay. Mr. Twanio with Joel. If you'd like to address the planning commission, would you please state your name and your affiliation? And you can go ahead.
You might be muted.
He's muted, but yeah. If Mr. Twanio, if you'd like to go ahead, you may do so now.
Can I go to?
There are some, there's something that may be wrong with audio. All right. Can you tell Brad?
I think it's, yeah, there is.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your being here tonight. Hopefully you can at least hear us. I apologize if you have wanted to address us but can't. So we'll, we'll move on. Let's go on to our main topic tonight. Our seventh order of business is our 2025 comprehensive plan update, the land use component. Thanks for the big table again. That helps out a lot. Brad, are you leading our conversation?
Um, no, I'm not.
Brad is back. Brad, are you ready to go? Do you need a moment?
No, it won't matter. All right. So what you have in front of you is the updated revised version of the goals policies as they are currently for the land use. We were able to incorporate, if you recall, we had a separate section in the current comprehensive plan element that deals with implementation. Deals with implementation. And for the most part, we were able to pull those things in as implementation actions as part of this process. In other cases, we were able to move it to other elements. We were also able to update the language based on comments that we received.
Yep. So on this chart, we also have proposed staff language and comments, and we incorporated all those internally. Don't know if you guys have had a chance to go through them or talk through these. I was absent from the last meeting we had.
But we, until Brad's back, if you, if it's okay with you, we, we kind of go see if anybody has any remarks on the first page and move on that way.
Yep, sounds good. So we'll start with land use goal one. Ensure the land use element is, and is coordinated with other city neighboring jurisdictional and regional plans. This is a new overarching goal. Our policy would be to engage residents and planning for the city with an action of structured public involvement in the planning process. So decisions made regarding the growth and development of the city engage all parts of the community, reflect general community goals, and are sensitive to special interests of affected parties.
I think it should be a minor thing. I think it should be affect with an A.
Ooh.
Just go right there.
Affectation.
Yeah. I feel like our comment earlier was a good example of this.
Agreed.
There. Yes.
And then we have policy 1.2, coordinate the land use element and citywide land use map with the rest of the comprehensive plan and all adopted city plans and regulations. The language is slightly different from the existing current or the current goal. Staff notes are to focus on city plans and regulations.
Actually, in this particular case, we are swapping. This is the old goal, overarching goal. And we wanted to have a goal that sort of said, yes, we need to coordinate with our plan as well as regional plans and talk to the other plans of the other jurisdictions. So we didn't want to lose this necessarily as a policy. And that's why we included here. And we also, we had a whole series of ensure consistency with and then about every single thing that we've ever adopted. We decided just to consolidate that into the simple language.
I think that is the goal of this update is to condense and shorten where possible.
You'll see how that works on the also implementation measure, which also takes a whole series of other policies and makes them actual implementation things. I think this is a good way to get at the individual plans. Emphasize the individual plans because they are, I mean, all the work that the city has spent in, in working on and adopting, the herbivore ski plan and so forth, it just helps us get at that.
I did notice we don't have the hazard mitigation plan. So that is intentional. Okay.
Yes, Erica is correct. We probably should, we probably should, we need to add. So that's the thirst and hazards mitigation plan. If you recall, that is also going to be a big part of our climate element. So it makes a lot of sense to include here.
And there's, there's no problem with having the same policy show up in more than one element, is there?
Not necessarily. I, what I, if we have instances like this and we're, we're still working on how this might work, is we're looking at potentially an overarching comprehensive plan goal. And the things that we're looking at that could fall under that would be things like ensure participation in the community in the development of regulations and policies, equity, dealing with climate throughout, those kinds of things. Those broader things that we're going to find in each element where we want to see in each element are sort of addressed up here. And then we can have individual implementation drawing on that in each of the elements as appropriate. So, you know, conservation may have an implementation that deals with this particular thing, component of that and so forth. We're still kind of working through the structure of what that could look like. But pardon me, I think we've got about seven or eight overarching things that we're looking at. It really came out of our discussion with the consultant on the transportation. Because currently our transportation plan has 19 goals, which is a lot of goals. And we wanted to reduce them down enough to be, you know, there are core principles that I think everybody can agree to rather than try to remember all 19 of these very important things. So it came about as part of that discussion.
Maybe it was at a prior meeting, maybe, maybe Erica, you mentioned figuring out maybe some sort of symbological way to kind of recognize the interconnectedness of these things.
It's, and then if you, as a good example of that, if you look at our housing action plan, we, we assign symbols to particular things, you know, this deals with affordability. This deals with.
Helps us achieve this and build this.
Exactly. So I, I think it would be appropriate to think about doing something similar here.
Yeah, I like that idea of let's weave it together.
One question that we, we had, and we probably still have to have some discussions probably with the mayor and council and yourselves, is the town center plan. Currently, what consists of the town center plan is a street plan for this area, south of Tom Water Boulevard, I mean, north of Tom Water Boulevard to Israel from the freeway castle. And we also have a pretty detailed planning chapter that deals with development here and divides this area into various sub areas, mixed use at some level, office more, residential more, those kinds of things. We have seen some development, but we really haven't seen a lot over the past 25 years in support of the plan. And I think it's important that we sort of revisit that and think, is that, if that's still a goal, we keep it. If we need to modify it, we modify it.
Well, here's leasing the land rather than owning it, right?
Yeah. The other complicating issue is the southern half is owned by the Port of Olympia. And their model, as Terry mentioned, is a lease model rather than an ownership model. So it makes it interesting to.
What's in built sound at the end of the street by the library? Carries the library street through. Notice you can now.
Oh.
Drive through on a dirt road and you're building.
Yeah. That was the, that was the construction lay down area for all the work on Israel originally. I think they're going to be doing their work site. It got, it's, it appeared and then it got bigger and bigger as they kept working on it. I think that they're going to need to reuse it this summer when they do the, finish the repaving out here. There is a development proposal that is in for review for that old parcel immediately south of us for apartments and mixed use. I don't think there's been a lot happening on that since it, what came in in '23. I think we've done the notice of allocation and it's just sort of stalled. I'm not aware that they've gotten an approval or what the outstanding issues are. But that's eventually.
The road by the library is not going to go through anytime soon.
Potentially. If that project goes, the proposal is actually to connect New Market, which is the road between us and the library, around the existing New Market site and connect him to where the roundabout is. So there ultimately that connection would be made by that project.
Happens this year. You can get through on the dirt road right now.
You can, no, not yet, not yet.
I think you can.
If you have, you've been trespassing, but I don't.
I know. I'm sure I was trespassing, but you can get through. Didn't say you may get through.
Okay.
Okay, I was trying to know.
Terry's getting it. Terry has got to get through.
Brad, I'm wondering, on the itemized list on page two for land use 1.2.1 language, it's nine, with, you know, possibly adding the hazard, meaning to add the hazard mitigation plan and concern plan. Do we really need to list and itemize all the different plans? And maybe we do, but do we need to also acknowledge that there may be other kinds of important city, regional plans that, management plans of one kind or another that will come into play in the future, even during our planning horizon? I'm especially thinking of the wildlands. I'm especially thinking of the wildlands interface management. I don't have the right term for it, but I have a block apparently about with its name, but, uh, there might be things that come online, um, uh, in the not-too-distant future, but that would, you know, so some generic phrase in here about, you know, future other management plans.
Yeah, I think that would be an appropriate thing to add as an additional implementation action. Uh, there are regional things that we've included and we're working on or initiatives that we should probably should be thinking.
Question that Commissioner Tobias raised earlier about the building that burnt down on Sunday, um, is there something we should talk about here around airlit properties? How more is this not? I just, on my mind ever since then, and I don't know, just want to bring it up, if that's something that.
Yeah. No, I, that is something that is dealt with currently by our code, uh, Title fifteen that has adopted in addition to the building code and plumbing code and everything else, uh, something that's known as the property maintenance code.
Okay.
Uh, and that essentially helps us deal with those kinds of issues, meaning that unsafe structures, obviously a building issue, uh, but just hazardous sites and things that are not kept up.
Yeah.
Uh, that would fall under the category. Now, when I mentioned that, you know, that there's a potential arson investigation underway, I don't know necessarily how much they can do now to clean up, or do they need to time to complete the investigation or all, or insurance, all those kinds of things. I, I know our building official, he wasn't exactly excited on Monday, uh, but he knew, has already had conversations with the fire department about it, where they are in the process and all that, so he could line up what he needs to do. And we, we've been in contact with the owner.
And it goes back to the downtown area, the city center area, is it here, is it there, where, does that, why, and how to build things around that area look, or if they're not being kept up, what do?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and now that property maintenance code is a citywide, so that applies to any property, and we've had to apply it in some cases. Uh, the, the issue becomes for us sometimes, it's just an issue of how, uh, how much, how resources we can devote to it, uh, because anytime we have to step in and do what a property owner should be doing, uh, that takes a lot of money and resources. We've had, when you commit city funds to do something.
Like the brewery.
Like the brewery.
I didn't even want to touch that.
The buildings, but other buildings. It, you know, so there are, there are various steps that we go through. I'll, I'll let you know when I have, you know, those more himself.
Okay. Thank you.
Didn't want to cut off conversation on the other stuff yet, and with Ellen.
Anyway, back to the town center. So if you have thoughts of any kind, uh, whether we should be doing this, whether it should be continuing and so forth, let's include that as our conversation, uh, because I think we, I'd like to have that similar conversation with the General Government Committee, get their feedback on that and go from there, so we have some direction with that.
Okay.
Um, going to page five of the land use goal two, uh, we really made some very minor modifications to existing goal, which is, again, a sort of a fundamental, uh, rough management goal of ensuring that we, the development occurs in orderly fashion, uh, observing, uh, critical areas and so forth. Um, I think we, the addition there was addressing equity and climate change are the two additional things we added to that list. We're also, just to give you a heads up, I mentioned at the work session with the council that one of the state laws we're looking at right now is modifications to our permitting system. Um, the, the recent state legislation, uh, set some very, even more specific timeframes for us to review and get back to applicants in terms of their applications. Uh, depending on the level of application, there's a certain timeline that we have to return, uh, things in if they give us the sufficient information. Um, and more importantly, it's a, uh, there's a series of monitoring and reporting requirements. We're in the process right now of trying to, uh, put a new system-wide computer system in for the entire city. Uh, we've implemented for the finance department, uh, we're going to be doing so for the planning and permitting department, starting at the end of this year. Been about four years now since we started this process. Just as a caution, if you've ever tried to implement a system-wide, uh, system, that you have to allow for additional time for your staff to complete the duties they already have, plus do all the necessary testing and putting a brand-new system in, and also don't always believe your consultant. Um, yeah, on top of that, the, the state requirements appear to be in addition to even what we were hoping to get out of this new system, uh, which means we're going to have some interesting things to try to figure out how to calculate things that our system doesn't do for us right now on all our permits. We have a stop-start times for everything. We asked for information, you stop the clock. Well, where does that clock sit? Who stops it? Anyway, so if you see our permitting staff resigning en masse, that's why, and Erica may have to go back to the center, she wants to. So when we're talking about implementation, that's fundamentally what we're talking about, part of that. Um, I mentioned the, the state bill fifty-two ninety is, is what we're talking about there. There are some other things as part of that, that we really, we sort of included the existing language, but we really didn't go too far in updating it. I'm more than happy to entertain any proposals you may have after you've had a chance to really look at this and think about this, uh, about how we can help update this even further. Again, this is just sort of the start of the discussion. We are, um, scheduled to meet with the TRPC staff in the next couple of weeks, uh, of course, our meeting number six to talk about the land capacity analysis, um, and hopefully have that in shape for us to use by the reading box. So that will allow us to really do all the necessary background work and then pile that up.
I was going to say, for, uh, policy two point two, we did receive public comment about, uh, neighborhoods and city centers and kind of an overall design for the city. So I don't know if that went into play with the revision here, but that is something I think would be good to talk about as goals, like a downtown city center, yeah?
Yeah. So are you referring to the, the general?
Survey.
Survey, city design.
Yes, our first survey.
Community character, small town, all those kinds of elements as part of that.
Yeah.
I was going to say, so a number of items under, uh, two point one, um, you know, you've got men, or, well, item two, you mentioned, uh, define a regular basis, uh, every three to three or five years, or something to that effect. What's sort of the consistency with other policies? You know, I figure if we're reviewing them on a similar schedule, uh, to what we've reviewed the policies on, would probably make the most sense. Um, like, it wouldn't make sense for us to say, oh, we'll review the policy every five years, but review this specific language every three years, you know? You might, uh, you know, I, I, I don't know how you would define regular, but as far as, you know, you'd probably want to go for consistency of application more so than, you know, trying to give this one three years, this one every two years, this one every five years, you know?
You want to do everything at once?
Yeah. I, I think it's a good point, Ed. I, I think one way to deal with that is, and this is how we dealt with the, uh, the housing action plan and the climate plan and so forth, is when we adopted those, we made the necessary amendments to the comprehensive plan, uh, in terms of adding additional policies and updating where we needed at that time to do that. And I think that's probably the appropriate thing to do anytime we're updating a plan or having a plan, to have that as part of the process.
Or you, you can always add like a caveat, like at least, uh, every five years, and then if you review it after three years, then it's like, okay, you've met that goal, and then you'll get that sort of staggered schedule where, you know, you, you don't have to do it all at once, you don't like wait five years and then do them all together. You could say, okay, we do it as they come, and then this one that we did a few years ago, you know, will be, I mean, that buys us another five years on that, you know, sort of thing.
I'm wondering, um, whether on a thing like that, if it's, is there something that triggers a need to do that kind of, uh, uh, monitoring and update, or, you know, maybe leave it alone and just let the comp plan itself, if there's a need to, uh, kind of an as, as necessary.
My, my preference for this would be an as necessary, uh, because obviously, if you've been following the state legislature, we've been getting very excited every year, meaning that we're probably going to be revisiting some of these things sooner than later. Um, and also, it's a capacity issue for us. Um, if you're aware, there are other things that we end up doing when we're not updating our comp plan, uh, and we probably don't have the capacity to do this whole review, uh, very often. And how we do that, we'll, we'll have to think that through. And my, my other concern, and this is just because the state has extended our deadline, you know, it's, this is a ten-year update. In the past, it's been a five, then an eight, and now a ten, uh, and that's well and good, you know, because in theory, you know, that reduces the amount of time you're spending updating a plan. Uh, at the same time, you put it off for ten years and things change remarkably in ten years. So we have to figure out a middle ground, I think, with that.
Is it one of the requirements that we do a review after five years?
It's a review and a report, not necessarily.
Update.
Yeah, not necessarily an update.
But it's a, it's more of a public, uh, awareness, hey, we've, we've got this system and here's our report to you about how it's working.
Yeah, and I have to double-check actually what, what it covers. I know housing is something we'll have to report on in five years, is this working, is it not? I don't know if that extends to the other elements, I'll have to double-check, because I don't.
I'm just, you know.
Is the report to the public, is it reports to the executive branch of the state of Washington? Is there, is the report to the people, or is it to the executive branch of the state of Washington? Seems to me part of commerce is the one that we're going to be reporting to, not reporting to the people.
I believe it's to commerce, but in my mind, if you report to commerce, you're better reporting to the community. So, again, I have to double-check the requirements.
I think that maybe, um, the, the point of reporting to commerce is that they post stuff on a website that's publicly accessible.
Yeah, and again, how many term order residences may necessarily look at that versus letting the term order residents know, by the way.
Right.
Here's a report available on our website, or come in, we talk about it as a planning commission, or the city council, whatever. So I, my mind says if we're wanting to report this and make it actually useful, state registries are great, if you know where they are and you know they exist.
But the more relevant it is to our own.
Yeah, and it's, it, that's the important point in my mind, it's relevant to community in every area.
I'm thinking with at least for two point two point one, so the action, um, when we say review and update city development standards, um, allow on a regular basis to ensure that they incorporate innovative land use management techniques, isn't that something we would use like the comprehensive plan amendment for?
It doesn't need a comprehensive plan, yeah. It could be built into our work program, annual work program. It, the, the, the good thing about updating the development regulations is it's easier than updating the comp plan.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, I feel like if we leave it general, there are still ways that we could update. Um, like the hazard mitigation plan has a five-year timeline on it anyways for updating. So a lot of the plans we have do have incorporated review timelines for updating. So I do like the idea of keeping it general, because we do have other ways to update as needed.
Yeah, and I think we've almost updated every section of code once we complete the Urban Forestry Amendment, um, that, that exists since I've started. So I don't want to say we're starting again with the sign code if you guys really want to, uh, but we're not. Uh, nobody's asking us to do that yet, but yeah, I, I think that seems to be appropriate.
Unless it's required by state.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't think we need to say that. I think if it's required by state.
Yeah, we do whatever that requirement is, but if, but if it's not, and it's left up open, yes, I think, you know, maybe there's just a, let's, let's not make bureaucratic work for ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, and, and for most of the updates that we've been doing, we've been saying, we've been seeing things in the code that say, well, is this really doing what we want it to do? And is it doing it in a way that's adding more complication? Uh, and we've been trying our best to reduce the complication as much as possible, so I just want to leave that open.
And I guess, you know, for some things, you, you're going to hear from, say, the developer community or somebody else, you know, if it's, if somehow there are way more hiccups than are acceptable. For other things, it's strictly an internal staff kind of process, and nobody's going to really see it, right?
Yeah, in, in some cases, but I mean, for example, like a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Uh, when we start for CIPA.
Certainly the outcomes of those.
Yeah. And those, we looked at revising because we were asking ourselves, do we really need to have an extra step, extra time, extra process to achieve what we need to accomplish? I mean, with the CIPA, uh, regulations, we have, we've, we've updated so many other sections of our code to deal with all the environmental impacts, we don't need to use CIPA the same way we did in the nineties and eighties. Uh, so why are we doing that process? Is that needed? So that's kind of a similar mindset that we have. If the state's requiring us to do this, why do we have this extra step? You know, add anything? So also, uh, land use three, dealing with adequate public facilities, uh, when available, we're proposing the existing development, we're not proposing any changes to that. This is really kind of at the heart of the connection of the, of the land use element to the transportation and the lands for public purposes, meaning that if we're going to allow particular growth, we need to have all the infrastructure in place for that growth occurs, and it's all, the requirements are connected. So I think, I'm not proposing any dramatic changes to the existing language to that, or So the first three goals were sort of part of a, a group of growth management related things. Again, we have a separate set of goals dealing with sort of the equitable, equitable community, goals dealing with housing, transportation, and open space. And each of these are really kind of focused on what the land use element does in terms of, kind of the housing side, uh, meaning that we ensure that the coordination between the land use element and the housing element occurs for housing densities, uh, we allow for the inventive techniques to occur to create more housing, um, increasing housing types and densities to meet needs of changing populations, all of those kinds of things. Those are kinds of policies we already had, we've just made some very minor changes to the language, and it's still, it's still, I think, meets the intent and goals, uh, of the current, um, housing element. But if there's additional things that you see that we, we should be considering, we're definitely open to that.
Would this be the area where, um, power transmission, cell towers, that kind of stuff comes into play?
Uh, this is, I think, more focused on, uh, those kinds of things are dealt with, first of all, separately in the lands for public purposes element, and the, and the, and the things that are in the land use, uh, goal three, tying those things in. There may be particular things that are dealt with by later goals in the land use element that touch on that, but in my mind, it, it's sort of sets it up, here's the connection, and then most of the policies and goals sit over in the other element.
Telecom, fiber.
Telecom, yeah, so utilities element, again, deals with all the private.
Yeah.
We funded, so telecom, uh, power, all those kinds of things, and then lands for public purposes deals with water, sewer. And then lands for public purposes deals with water, sewer, police, center, schools. Five is just emphasizing the fact that we want to have, make sure that the land use patterns that we're creating, support the multimodal systems that we want. And are, more importantly, why are we doing trans, why is transportation even talked about? What is the purpose of the transportation? Well, it's to get people between the different uses. And when we're talking about that, how easy it is for them to choose different ways of getting between those uses. So this is where that interaction comes in. So, Michael?
A question actually on that, so land use five, I think the big change that sticks out to me is changing from ensure development patterns encourage efficient to provide efficient. So when you say provide, on the one hand, I think that is, it shows a lot of action and initiative by the city, like, we're going to do this. But on the other hand, does that also leave the city liable for, or like legally on the hook for, if you aren't providing those multimodal and active transportation systems, the city could face like a lawsuit, for example, for, you know, not fulfilling that. Granted, it's an internal policy, but still.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think it creates an issue. I think what this does, it does set us up for strengthening our regulations that require new development to provide for different options for transportation. And I think we've already started down that path, for example, our various requirements for allowing for bicycle parking depending upon use, providing for connections between different land uses. And I apologize, I'm sort of remembering different conversations that have involved the commission, so I'm going to give you a hint of where we're going to go. On the transportation side, we, there, there was a, some work that was done by the Thurston Prize, which is a collective near the county that focuses on ways to make a healthier community. They have different elements, housing, environment and transportation. They finished sort of a community-wide survey, Lacey, Olympia and Tom Water, over the past couple of years of identifying formally informal, non-motorized connection possibilities. And they were really focused in, the, the, the reason they were doing this is there was a development in Olympia that was near, adjacent to a regional trail system, but they didn't actually try to connect to the regional trail system. If you've been up and down the Shehawas Western Trail, you'll notice that at some points you, you go into different neighborhoods and so forth. They were looking for opportunities for such things throughout the three, three cities. And identified some things that we should be thinking about when we're sort of planning on the transportation side for providing for those connections. So when development occurs, number one, for example, if you've got a subdivision that's going in the six next to another subdivision eventually, allow for connections not only between roads to roads for vehicles, but also for bike to bike or pedestrian to pedestrian, but don't have to include the road component. You know, so you don't have these giant subdivisions of, of two hundred units that you can access off the main route, but if you want to go next door, you have to go out to the main road, up and around, you know. So just to be thinking about it that way. So as a hint, that's where our transportation plan is going to go, and a lot more than it has in the past. Part of the development of the transportation bike and ped plan.
It seems like you would want to have both, I mean, kind of the hint, that hinge word efficient. Is both what you're describing, the efficient movement of people, doesn't necessarily involve automobiles. But you also have the efficient development so that it's possible to provide the infrastructure of whatever kind. Roads, sewer, water, whatever the thing. So, you know, it's kind of maybe two sides of the same coin, if you will, but do you see what I mean, that distinction?
Yeah, it's, well, it's very much thinking, you know, a development is going to come in and think of only the best way to do what it wants to do. There are going to be opportunities and things that need to be thought of on the citywide level or the regional level in terms of how is this development going to support connections to other development, extending water, extending sewer, providing those opportunities, providing those, you know, dead end streets saying this is a future connection, all of those kinds of things to eventually allow, you know, more efficient buildup.
So another thing that I think I brought up before is the destination master plan for Thurston County that was just completed and is able to be accessed. It talks about agoutourism and all these other things, which are tourism based. However, there's a lot in that plan that residents put together and put their voice forward. Part of it ties with connecting different communities together, so a lot of this ties into this. And the destination, destination master plan, I think it's around four hundred pages, but it is ready to go if you would like to read it. And I know Annette would love to come in and talk to you about it as well. It's a great thing that was just a bottom line put in.
No, I think that would be an appropriate topic for us to do, and I also, let me, let me download it, look at it, send it to our transportation consultant. A few other things, because I think, yeah, I, I want to use the words that others have done.
Want me to send it to you, or do you have access to it?
I haven't gone looking for it yet.
I'll send it to you.
If you want to send it to me, I mean, I'd be happy to take a look at it.
Everybody.
That's cool.
Yeah, and I can, I can provide a link, if it's too big, I can provide a link as well.
Brad, I'm wondering if on, on LU five, if a simplistic way to word this is development patterns that emphasize the movement of people.
There are some comment, again, I'm hinting at.
And not vehicles, you know.
No, 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 I'm, I'm hinting at various ways that we have been sort of talking about various, wait, beyond cars. I think, I think we have some language that we're developing in the transportation plan goals that I think would be applicable here. So we've, again, only very minor modifications to this section. I think once we get transportation planning well, that will help us make further revisions to this, simplification of this. Most of these, again, are focused on how we can, what kind of land development, what kind of land use, it's important, these kinds of things. So I think that in general, these are the things we want to, we want to keep. The language, I think, could change.
Can you, before we move out of five, can you talk about five point seven a little bit? And utilizing the capacity of existing transit?
Yeah, so. That's it, you know, that, that's one that we didn't modify, we didn't change very much in the, the current version.
Require versus encourage.
Yeah, you, you changed it a lot.
Yeah.
I don't know how you're going to require it.
I don't know how you're going to require it, and, and I'm just kind of wondering about utilizing the capacity. Seems contrary to the growth management goal of, if you're going to increase the demand for a particular chunk of infrastructure, case transportation, you need to pay for it. And this seems to be contrary to that, like, eh, you can just use existing.
I think, I think it's not exceeding the capacity, it's using existing capacity.
Because there's a lot of, there's still a lot of room for growth in all the city's networks?
I would say on the transit system, yes. I think it's probably not used anywhere near its full capacity. I do agree that requiring it felt really good. But I could probably take a closer look at that.
If we mean.
I got tired of people saying, let's just think about doing it and let's just do it.
You know, I'd like to push on it, but if we just mean transit, if we just mean transit and non-motorized, we should say that. But otherwise, it seems to indicate we're going to tell everybody, yeah, dump on the roads.
Well, again, it, it comes down to the capacity issue. So if, if the roads, if the proposal exceeds the, the capacity in terms of.
Or is it just able to.
Or is anticipated to put an intersection into such a, you know, level of service that it's no longer functioning. This doesn't say, yeah, you're done, it, it just means that if you've got capacity, use it. And then, once you get to that capacity, you've got to do what TMA says.
Have the current capacity, but what, but in, you know, I don't know, it seems like there should be some clearer language about that.
We will look. Thought I could slip that.
Sorry.
Need objection to five eight, I, I changed encouraged to require there. This is why I'm going to fight about, because I do think it's important.
Well, sometimes I think when we were moving from encouraged to require, I'm looking for an action.
But an implementation action.
I think, I think the two need to go together if you're going to make that jump.
I think that's a valid point.
I have one that's very minor, but five point two, the grammarian in me notice, discourage transportation improvements, comma, regardless of their financing mechanisms that would trigger, when you want a comma after the end of mechanisms? Because that's, I don't remember what the term is, but basically that part, the regardless of their financing mechanisms is its own like.
Clause.
Clause, that's the word. So you'd want to separate the clause, because right now it kind of flows into regardless of the financing mechanism that would trigger development inconsistent. So the fi, it sounds like it's saying the financing mechanisms would trigger the development.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, and I apologize, what policy was that again?
Uh, five point two, uh, five, five point ten, sorry, that's what I meant, sorry.
I was like, I'm not reading that right.
That shows how closely I read, I've read it enough to see common difference.
Five eleven, when we say ensure alternative transportation modes, is that, could that be translated to sidewalks? And I think, I mean, it sounds like an awfully expensive way to say we are going to do, put in more sidewalks.
And I, I think there's a, a different, less jargoning way to say that. That's above and beyond the sidewalks.
You think there's something beyond sidewalk?
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes.
Are those, are those strictly self-contained within, within a particular development? Or are we, seems like what we're really aiming at is trying to connect the people using those sidewalks, trails, paths, what have you, to services or opportunities that.
Yeah, but also within development.
Sure.
Because I think sometimes we associate larger developments with a larger commercial, strip mall development, for example, and all that, ensuring that you can walk from one point to the other.
Yeah, I was, I was on like a Facebook, you know, development site, and, and one person was, oh, look, I've got a walkable development here because somebody can walk from their car to their house. And, you know, to me, that's not quite getting to the full picture.
It's getting. Goal six deals with, this is the environmental side, meaning that if the critical areas are, are on the site and so forth, take that into account when you're allowing for development. Meaning that you don't try to develop those areas that have critical areas on them. I, I did like the ensure physical, physical limitations by observing, not proposing any changes to that.
You mean like, I always thought you mean like the geography of it? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so wetlands, steep slopes, floodways, all those things.
Yeah, okay.
And then we move into the individual land use goals. So first is the residential ones. Not really dramatic changes there. Except that the bottom two, I thought the implementation actions seem to be more policy than implementation. We can definitely talk further about that.
Looking at seven point three, and getting back to the data, near city transit, Tom Water. It would be like, we probably need to develop some of these things outside of the existing system in order to convince them that they need to put it in. Their answer always is, well, there's no reason to put bus transportation over there because there's nobody going over there. Well, let's build something over there that people are there, and then they'll, you know, if you build it, they'll come.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm not, kind of mixed, and, and part of me says that, wow, I don't want islands that hopefully eventually will be served. When you probably should be emphasizing connections or building within those areas that already have some level of connection.
Well, except that we, we can envision within Tom Water where we want those islands to be. Rather than having them never happen, because if we're going to, ten years from now, the only place we've got bus transportation is on Little Rock Road and Capitol Boulevard, it's going to be a sad, sad situation.
Which also reminds me that I would need to. The goal LU eight is dealing with commercial. This was also just some minor modifications, nothing dramatic. And we also added similar goals dealing with manufacturing industrial warehouse that hadn't really been dealing with in the past. But I thought we needed to pull that out from the commercial, because in my mind, those are, those have two different needs. Don't necessarily want a walkable industrial development.
Is commercial, is this commercial and industrial?
It's separate now. In, in the, in the old system, it was, all the goals in section, goal tens were commercial and industrial.
This is just the commercial stuff that we could have.
Eight is, eight is just commercial now, and mine is, is industrial and warehouse.
So it might, it might still be appropriate, though, to, to have some multimodal access and choices with, you know, between and amongst commercial areas and residential.
A lot of the light industrial areas are becoming commercial. So it's, they're just muddying right into each other. Bakeries, you name it.
Yeah.
Bars.
It's more affordable to go and rent that one of those spaces than a traditional space.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point, because that is something that we have seen actually happen, so.
I mean, there's got to be a way to distinguish, you know, things, the, the type of traffic. You know, the type of traffic going to a beer pub or a restaurant is, is commercial in nature, not, you know, industrial with big semis.
Yeah, but the flexibility to use space in multiple different ways starts to get complicated.
But, I mean, if it's, if it's going to serve those purposes, then shouldn't it have those services? Shouldn't it have that infrastructure?
You got a warehouse on Highway ninety-nine that for at least five years was vacant, didn't have anything in it. Then it became a childcare center, and now it's BUDS, grocery store. So there, 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 it never got to be a warehouse.
Yeah.
And, and it, and it went from light industrial, or I don't know what you call a childcare center, true, not light industrial, light pressure to, to a commercial. So it's gone through all three.
Well, and, and the landscaping in here, so when I think of some of the places that we're talking about, really no green space, it's all concrete and asphalt. So there's some locations that do, and then I think of, I can't remember the name right now, where there's a whole bunch of trucking and everything north of. now, where there's a whole bunch of trucking and everything, north of Olympia, by the dump out there.
Oh.
It's been a long day. They have quite a few green spaces outside those commercial spaces.
Yes, when they developed it, they developed as an industrial park, that each of the, I mean, there's a sentiment amount of landscaping.
Yeah. I don't know if that ties into the industrial or this commercial piece, but.
I, I think that was the vision, that was in the, in the current, the current comprehensive plan, is something similar to happen. And I didn't change any of that, bringing it over, but I'm also wondering, you know, is that necessarily the model for all industrial space, or is that, you know? We, we were talking about reuse, I mean, like, Terry mentioned, I mean, all of those things start to be, it, it, that's a different thing.
Yeah.
Not a suburban, drive-to-industrial thing, suddenly you wanna have some level of connection. So I don't know how to achieve that.
Well, and that would promote the walkability of the space, and it would promote a lot more immunity around those spaces as well.
They are building out quite a bit, adding restaurants and medical clinics and stuff around that industrial area.
There are no sidewalks, it's FUD's. You can't get there without walking, without walking in the road or on grass.
Yeah, but you were talking about building an island, um, somebody could remember, that's a little bit with all the trucking and everything out there. That was an island for industrial, and it has driven population growth, housing growth, multiple aspects that we've been talking about in this plan, and they've done a pretty good job of it up there.
Well, the area was designed to be a warehouse area, and while it was being designed and built, the city tran- not the city, but the community transitioned from small warehouses to large warehouse. And those were not large enough to be efficiently used, so they sat empty.
That's something we're seeing on the local market right now, is we have a, a lot of small industrial space. And I could see a lot of, you know, we have a lot of, users are small, large industrial space, but we do definitely have more supply than demand, that's why we're also seeing uses. Land use goal ten deals with open space and, and different. And then we get into, oh, this is a, a little bit, we talked about the public facilities side.
Yeah.
This is where we get at, as part of this cluster of, of land use eleven and twelve. These are new policies. It also, uh, land use twelve deals with essential public facilities, which we have, we have code to deal with, but we never had policies to deal with.
Can you explain what that means?
Uh, it's all those things that everybody uses, but nobody wants near it.
I, I know it's, um, essential public facilities, but what do you mean when you have code but not policy?
Meaning that, uh, we, we have a section of the code as part of our initial use permitting process that deals with essential public facilities and has very extensive requirements. We have that exact same language in our lands for public purposes element, uh, that basically describes that, but we have no policies that deal, the sort of the policies to begin with.
We don't have a what's-it-for kind of a statement?
Yeah, we don't have a-
We don't know what our objective is with the chunk of the-
Exactly. We don't have, we don't have a goal or objective that widely has this in the first place, aside from the state requirement.
What do you mean?
Yeah, so I thought we'd provide the policy framework after we already have it.
Some sort of, here's why it's important to-
Here's why it's important, here's, here's guiding things to develop the regulations we already have, uh, those kinds of things. So I'm, I'm doing, I'm building the house after this. Implementation for the house after.
Okay.
We're in twelve, right?
Yep.
Can you translate twelve point four two? What, what is the citing criteria, land use compatibility with surrounding areas? Mean?
Meaning, meaning, you actually want us to translate, this is kind of easy.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll-
And thank you for noticing that we left that in. Let me just make sure I actually translate this into English. This is essentially, here's the things that you need to do in order to develop or have an essential public facility, being near major transportation, making sure it's compatible with stuff near it, addressing potential environmental impacts, those kinds of things. So, I think those things are probably good things to include in the policy, but I definitely think the language needs to be improved.
So, is that something, does, I mean?
It's also really drawn from the RCW.
Yeah, it, it sounds like it's from the RCW, but I'm wondering if it's, you know, we painted the water, water towers, sky blue with trees.
No.
Okay.
No, no. This is, this is pulling back even farther.
Yeah, I, I think it means something a little, you know, to be, to be fitting in with the community around it, or the context around it, or that kind of thing.
No, compatibility actually becomes much more fundamental in, in terms of, you know.
Are we talking about an ecosystem of the kinds of, you know, like, there's, yeah, a lot of, a lot of places have a whole medical economy, kind of thing, doctors.
No, this, this is, if you put a, a really noisy thing next to a residential neighborhood, is that, is that compatible?
Okay.
Or something that's- Craving next to-
Bus park.
Bus park.
Yeah, yeah.
A re- a recycling center.
Recycling center, uh, yeah, that operates.
That's what I found in here somewhere, you know.
Compost.
Yeah, so we're, we're not dealing with, we're dealing with very concrete.
Yeah, okay.
Compatibility, as in, I can't sleep at night because of this.
Yeah, okay.
Twelve point two is a similar, if, if you read twelve point two, that infers that a essential public facility has, has no public benefit. And it wouldn't be essential if it didn't have public benefit.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that is-
That we're done with.
Unless we say additional public benefits.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think, I think we could-
I'll buy that.
We could, uh, we need to look.
In the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
I mean, yeah, there's certainly essential public facilities that I wouldn't like right next door to me, but I know that none of them has a-
Pressure time.
Actually, on that one, A, there's, uh, maybe put a comma after, ensure that, quote, where po- comma, where possible. But also, um, essential public facility sites are used jointly for public benefit. Jointly by who?
Yeah.
Is that the city and the people, the citizens? I think, you know, it just could be jointly, I mean, you, you'd be joint point of any two points, but.
Yeah, I, I wrote down, what does this mean, and then looked more closely at the language.
I feel like if we look at the waste center with the dog park and the trail, that this would-
That's where, that's where you start to see things that make sense to work together.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's probably.
Could be.
Dog park?
Yeah, I've been going following the audience, but yeah, sometimes.
Yes, you know, there might be, there might be times where they are, where, where it is kinda useful to have things, you know, kinda close together, or maybe there's something, some efficiency that they're getting, you know, I don't know what, but, but, uh, but some types of essential public facilities are, are their own thing, like, you know, the highway system, transmission lines, and things like that, so.
I'm thinking prisons.
Yeah.
Yeah, my mind keeps going to prisons.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we could think about joint public.
Well, think about schools.
But you're not gonna, you're not necessarily gonna glomming anything jointly with some essential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's other ways, I think, to phrase them.
Yeah.
I still like the idea of it, though, because if we were to build a school, what if we had fields that were also used for recreational sports after school hours? Like, to me, that is beneficial and is used jointly for the public's benefit.
Maybe we, yeah.
Universities.
Do we mean like auxiliary uses, or?
Well, it is a, essential public.
Schools.
Schools are.
So you would need two essential next to each other?
That's what I read that.
Yeah, I need to, that's why I wrote, thanks to Commissioner Tobias, what does this mean? And, uh-
Okay, so maybe we can-
We'll finesse it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Um, land use goal deals specifically with the airport, and we're not proposing any changes to that.
There are two thirteens.
Oh.
There is your two LU thirteen.
Oh, that's a historic.
Oh. Should be LU sixteen, yeah, you're right.
That needs, needs to be LU fourteen.
Fourteen and a-
I wanted to end up fourteen. All right, we will change that.
Unless you're just really trying to challenge it.
Right, I wanted to combine the airport and historical cultural resources.
Does have historical significance.
It does have.
Yeah.
Historical public resource.
So, um- We have, we have not to date moved anything from other elements to the land use element. We have, however, moved a bunch of things to the conservation element, the climate element, the economic element, and the transportation. And we've also gone through and deleted and outreplaced our various things. I'm sure you could take a look at that. And then those old implementation policies that I mentioned at the very beginning, we talked about where we have moved this to. For the most part, we moved it into the land use element, and a couple places we moved it into lands for public purposes. We actually have a topish one or two of these things, so we, I'm not convinced we need to leave, but. We haven't covered that you think we should be covering. Again, you will definitely get a look at this once we included all the necessary update work, once we have land capacity analysis. We are farther along working on the other elements, so, again, this is a work in progress. Anytime you have a comment or concern, let us know, because we can try to answer questions or include any revisions. I think, the next time will be, we got climate, you'll be meeting our consultant, and they'll be going through the very extensive process they're going through to create the climate element. I think they'll like a lot of the things that they're doing, I think it plays well with the equity side of things as well, and who they're involving in the discussions of the stakeholders. So think through any questions that you may have, that you would like to ask part of the discussion with the council. I think that would be a valuable thing for both the council and for us to be thinking about as we're developing, is the climate element is probably gonna move a little bit faster than some of the other elements. We have more resources to commit to it, and we have some good things work on that. So that one may be one of the first ones we see as a complete draft.
Will that meeting be more than an hour?
Our schedule, I think we're allowing for an hour, similar to the work session this morning, and we're not proposing a, a planning commission meeting after that.
Yeah, so it might could slip a little bit longer? An hour is pretty short.
It depends on the council, I know. We, we're, we're kind of working around the council's schedule on some of this, since it's also budgeting season.
Sure.
So we'll see.
Okay.
And what is the, happening on the twenty-third that you're canceling? Is it because the economic development plan hasn't been done, or?
Yeah, we've got a few things that are still, we're still, um, look, out looking for an economic development manager, yeah. So we, we need that person, I'd like to have that person help us guide the update of the plan. And then, I don't think it was enough to have a meeting just to talk about lands for public purposes policies, so that's why I moved it.
So our next meeting, um, after that, though, is Aug-, will be August, but there was also another joint, or another tour.
Yeah, the tour, I believe, is the second meeting in August.
Oh, okay.
It's the transportation.
Yeah, okay.
Council is taking their annual lead of the first half of August, or the second.
Okay.
Okay, so the thirteenth is now twenty-seven?
I can send everybody an updated schedule, too, see, see.
Lots of schedules.
I feel like I'm spending more time with schedules.
I mean, they just really help orient, you know, hey, where are-
So I think that's all we have. Oh, the displacement study, we're waiting for a consultant to give us their next steps at our kickoff. It sounds like Olympia's still working through some contract issues, so hopefully we'll have them.
Any other remarks? Work tonight, really good.
If you haven't looked at the virtual open house, it's still live for the housing element, and then the survey is still live as well, the housing survey.
Yeah, we, we changed that, and we're gonna keep it up until September, if people will have time.
Good.
Yeah, we, we're still networking, and we're still doing, um, community events, like I attended the Juneteenth event, uh, the Lacy Rack, um, that's where a lot of that feedback was received on the board of the types of metal housing. So I feel like that's a good idea, to keep that open, because it is gonna be an ongoing conversation as we net, network more, and do more community events throughout the summer and fall.
Pleasure, more discussion. Have you, have you adjourned?
Question that?
Yeah. Um, that was moved and seconded, that we adjourned tonight, and for the way Mr. Edward making ocean and that, um, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thank you. Good night.